Good morning, everybody. We've got a lot of stuff to talk about today, so we'll start out with a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Brian's or second, second by Dan Shaw and Cassie Fedler. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Joe, you ready to go? I see you've been on there.
Yeah, we're here. Yeah, the first up is, I have Wendell zoomed in here for this meeting. They're going to give us a presentation on where we're at with our long-term control plan, Phase 2, 3 project that we have at the plant. It's a large project. They've got a presentation that goes along with the TPS and cash flow sheet that I sent out to everybody. They're going to explain the pieces and parts of the work and the need for it. And approach that we're going to take to getting it done, implementing it. So Joe, we have Joe Defazio, Adam Byer, and Brian Sabiga. And I'm not sure who's taking off first. Is that you, Joe?
Yeah, yeah, I'll start us off.
Yeah, if I could get, if I could get the sharing abled, I'll show the presentation as we go.
We're working on it.
Sure.
The outside, Sandy? Should be good to go.
Everybody see it?
We're good, we're good.
Joe?
Okay, I'll say. So if we're good, I'll jump, I'll jump right into it. So thank you for allowing us to present this. I'm going to do a real quick introduction, let you know who we are. We'll get into the project economics, the scope of the work, get into some details on that, and then open it up to questions. So with you today is myself, Joe Defazio. I'm Wendell's Executive Vice President. I've been with the company 22 years. With me is Brian Sabiga. He's a principal in the firm. He's been with the company also 22 years. And Brian is, he's our leader of our water wastewater energy efficiency division and group. Adam Byer is an associate principal. He's been with the company 16 years. He's a certified energy manager. Adam works on all of our energy efficiency projects that we do in water and wastewater plants. The point, the key point here is that, you know, we worked together for a very long time, this team. Minimum of 16 years when you look at Adam's experience with the company. We were also the ones that implemented the Phase 1 project. So we've been working together on these types of projects for a very long time. We're very confident in the things that we're going to be recommending. A little bit on Wendell. When we submitted our proposal for this, we contemplated that not all of the scope of work that we're going to find will fit into what's called an energy performance contract. But for us, that's okay because we're able to do these projects using two delivery models, the energy performance contract delivery model and the traditional design bid build model. So you may ask yourself, you know, how do you decide what scope goes where? So essentially, what we did is we identified all of the opportunities, things that needed to get addressed at the plant, and the things that generated some savings, things that are complex in nature, require multiple trades to work on the same essential pieces of equipment, scopes of work that have, that we're going to guarantee the energy savings or the performance of, things that have a lot of interaction. We put those into an energy performance contract. The thing that limited that is the energy performance contract in law in New York State. So we put as much as we could into that delivery model because that, that allows the county to really hold Wendell accountable. And I like to use the word, or I know the phrase, that one choke, one throat to choke. Something goes wrong on this, you're not hunting around for multiple contractors to hold accountable. You hold Wendell accountable. So about $6 million worth of work can get done as an energy performance contract. So the scope of work that we identified to go with traditional, on the other key point in the performance contract is when we go out to get our trades, our subcontractors, we can do that using a private bid. We can pre-qualify these contractors, and we are in the process of pre-qualifying them, making sure that we're selecting contractors or allowing contractors to bid on it that are capable of doing the job, have done it in the past, and, you know, we're confident in their ability. In the traditional design bid build model, what we put in there was the concrete work. It's a single trade. We'll still manage all of that and coordinate it with the rest of the work that's going on, but that has to go out to a public bid. So, you know, any contractor that meets the requirements of the specifications is going to be allowed to bid on that. And that, we estimate, is going to be close to a $4 million concrete package. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Adam and Brian to kind of run through the details on the scope of work, the economics, and you can see how the project lays out.
Thanks, Joe. So you've all been, this has been distributed to everybody, this sheet here. Instead of everybody squinting and trying to read this, we broke out these into individual ECM slides so we give a refresher on what each of the measures is and what, how they interact with the system. If you have any questions, feel free to let us know and we can address them.
So the first thing we're going to talk about here is the influent pumping stations. And one of the things about this project that we kind of put together is, let's say like 95% of them are things that the district has committed to in their long-term control plan that's been developed and submitted and approved by DEC. And it's great that Joe Brilling brought that up. These screw pumps here, they work by the Archimedes Principle. And one of the interesting things is that they have a term called slippage. As these pumps have started to fail and age, they allow some of the sewage that is pulled up to the top to fall back to the bottom. What that means is they don't pump at the capacity it originally did, and you have lower efficiency. You spend a lot of energy getting that sewage going up towards the top, and it just falls back down to the bottom. So some of the things we're looking to do are to replace this asset with new pumps to get you to the original full capacity, to be able to pump more sewage than you can now as they started to fail as they've gotten older. And it is a case where we're taking advantage of energy and O&amp;M savings, about 30-some thousand per year to help offset a good portion of this cost. So it's asset renewal you have to do as part of the long-term control plan, but you're leveraging energy and O&amp;M savings to start to offset costs. Next slide, Adam? Next thing is another one from the long-term control plan. Your anaerobic digester mixing system. What we've seen is your existing mixer system is past its useful life. It's older than it should be. It started to fail, and it doesn't work very well. And what that means is you get reduced performance, and that's twofold. Part of it is you don't get the volatile solid reduction you want, but secondly, you reduce your gas production. When you destroy the volatiles in this process, you produce a beneficial gas, a methane gas you could use to run things like a turbine to generate electricity that we're going to talk about. So this is a case where we want to upgrade this system. You're going to get significant energy and O&amp;M savings, about $65,000 a year, and you're going to have a green component because you're going to increase methane gas, which you're going to use in-house to, using this generator to generate power. So it's going to be a dual improvement. Next thing we have is your bar screens. What it is, is these old screens are past their life. They're starting to fail. And the second thing is, in the 70s and 80s when a lot of this equipment was put in, you went with bigger bar spacings. What we've seen is you'll see things like flushable wipes now. I'm sure you've heard of that, where they're supposedly dissolvable, they're really not. They really shouldn't be flushed down the toilet, but they often are. When you've got this one-inch spacing, it lets those get through. When it clogs up downstream pumps, you've got to take them apart, pull them out. It causes issues. So we are going with a new, smaller spacing to basically take out these screenings that you're seeing much more of. Another item that's part of the long-term control plan again. And what you're going to do is by not having all this debris building up in your downstream pumping equipment in your digesters, you're going to see both longer equipment life and you're going to reduce the timeframe that you need to clean your digester. You're going to reduce cleaning. You're going to clean it less often. It's a case you're going to get about $8,000 worth of energy and O&amp;M savings. Next one? The grit system. So right now, you have an aerated grit system. You're putting air in there and then turning, allowing the grit to settle once it gets past the air. What we're talking about is going to a less energy-intensive vortex grit removal system. As you can see on that picture, the grit goes around there. It's a much longer period into this vortex. It has more time. It settles out. So what you do is you get better grit removal. That's going to result in better equipment life from downstream. Your pumps are worn by grit. It's abrasive. It breaks down the pump impellers. It causes them to need to be upgraded, to be less efficient, to need to be replaced. Second interesting thing about this component is the way your current system is laid out, when you get higher flows, the water physically backs up and gives you a misleading flow number. So we're going to put in new flow monitoring facilities. It'll give you more accurate monitoring of your actual flow going through the facility. It'll allow the staff to more effectively manage this flow to control sanitary sewer overflows. And lastly, it's a part of the long-term control plan. And as you can see, we're getting about $12,000 worth of energies and operational savings with this measure. And it is a measure that we're going to split between the EPC for the more complex grit removal system, and then the concrete and the general construction. Now I'm going to turn it over to Adam Byer to talk about one of the other measures.
Yep. Next up is the utilization of the digester gas. Despite the facility being really good at keeping the engine running for the Cogen, the electronics and controls have failed, and that has reduced and reduced, resulted in reduced operating hours, so less energy, heat and electricity generated. Initially, we reached out to companies to strictly replace the controls on the engine because they are spares and they have an engine in good condition. But with the age of the equipment, no manufacturer would warranty putting their controls on the older units. So we shifted gears and changed to swapping out the entire Cogen. As I had mentioned, the electronics have reduced the run hours of the equipment. The study that was still operating occasionally throughout the design, it has become completely non-operational due to the controls. Our savings was based on the study run hours. The savings are actually up in the $20,000 range if you account for the equipment not being operational any longer. Brian?
And the next item we have is the process water pumping. This is one right now where you have existing process water pumps. They're a little bit older. And what we found is the system is undersized. Both the combination of the pumps and you pull the water from the affluent channel, which isn't very deep, so you have a very limited supply you're pulling from. And the needs for your systems with both the thickener and the de-watering equipment require more water than you can build up in this limited-sized structure. So we are proposing to upgrade that base, that structure along with making the pumps bigger. This will allow the plant to run your thickeners and your cells de-watering at the same time. It'll really allow more efficient operation, be able to process more solids, and to allocate resources and staff most appropriately. So it's definitely going to be a positive benefit to the district and the plant's operation. There's another measure where a lot of it is concrete. So we did break it into the EPC contract for the actual pumps itself and the concrete contract for the actual big concrete structure. Turn it back to Adam.
The next item up is the digester structural and architectural repair. We took these photos last summer. The conditions have gotten worse since then. But you can see that the brick on the exterior of the digester has started bowing at the top. That's from water getting in behind the brick and through the freeze thaw cycle pushing out. This really goes hand-in-hand with the digester mixing item because when you take the tanks down to replace the mixing equipment, you'll have everything cleaned. And to remove the need to take everything down and clean it and empty it in the future, it made sense to do the, this measure at the same time. We evaluated it, and it was more economically feasible to rehabilitate the structure than to replace the tankage. What is being done under this measure is roughly a third of the brick at the top is being replaced. And on the structural side, the top cap here, as you can see, is being held together with some banding. That is going to be replaced along with the top portion of the tank down to good concrete. From the last time the digesters were taken down, there was reports of some spalling and a missing corbel. The corbel in this case is one of the seats that the digester gas lid sits on when the tank is empty.
And just for reference, if the digester did need to be completely replaced, you're probably looking at $6 or $7 million. So definitely rehabilitating it's going to economically make sense.
As we have gone through design, some measures have been removed, such as the septic receiving and the sludge dryer. But other measures have been added. As you can see from the photos, the digester roofing system has failed, and water is now starting to infiltrate the structure. An additional item is the mixing tank. Ray reported to us that when he or his guys were going into the tanks to derag the mixers, that they noticed there was significant spalling, and the structure was reaching the end of its service life. Because of this, we are replacing the tank. We're going to put it right next to it on the footprint, leaving the tankage as a potential overflow structure if needed. We found some energy savings with this item. We researched a newer type of mixer that is anti-ragging in its design, and we actually can go from two mixers to one mixer and save the energy that way. And hopefully reduce or eliminate the amount of time that the staff has to go in to the tankage. We have a few other items in development, one being a base flow blower. The blowers were replaced in the previous project, and they have been doing a great job working alternately to provide the right amount of air. With the fluctuations in the flow at the plant, the blowers had to be sized for the peak flow, which did restrict a little bit of operation on the low end. So in this measure, we're looking to remove the last remaining original blower and put in a lower horsepower blower to accommodate for the low-flow and low-oxygen demands periods to further optimize the efficiency of that system. Another item, recently Ray and Joe brought it to our attention that the digester boiler was failing, and that they were having technicians out frequently to keep it running. We have investigated this, and we found a skid-mounted modular boiler setup that could go in quickly and easily and more efficiently address the heating needs of the digester. The last item with the digester mixing, there was a lot of gas piping being removed and rearranged under the mixing measure, going from the gas mixing to a pump-style mixing system. So we were, we are looking further into replacing all of the gas piping and safety equipment just to hand over the best possible projects to Ray and Joe and the future operators of the plant. So the next steps, we're currently working on these steps under the PDA. Submit the draft EPC documents for review. We've got those in our internal QA system right now, and they're going to be released shortly for that review. We are working on our final construction documents, pulling together the two separate sets of documents and getting all the additional scope on them so we can submit them for regulatory approval. With those final construction documents, we can also use those to go out to private bid for the EPC subcontracts. As Joe mentioned earlier, we're working with four companies right now, getting them pre-qualified to bid on that. And then once we receive those final pricing, we will pull together the final EPC documents for approval. Steps that still need approval. Typically municipalities require a resolution to go to public bid. So we have drafted the front-end documents for the concrete portion, and I submitted those yesterday for review so we can get that resolution approved. And once all the numbers are in, it'll come back for final approval. The EPC documents, the EPC contract, and we can go to construction after that approval. Joe, Brian, I miss anything?
No, I think you covered it. So the steps that are already approved are, Adam mentioned the PDA, that's the Project Development Agreement. The county's already executed that, so we're working underneath that contract for those items. And, you know, the public bid of the concrete work is just another authorization that the county would need to give us so that we can proceed with that.
And like they said, I just got those documents yesterday. And I'm going to have to reach out to Debbie and Al. I've never gone out for this large of a public thing on our own, anyway. I just want to make sure that the county is satisfied with the language in all of that paperwork. So I'm going to have to get through all of it myself, and then make sure the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. Debbie, lucky you, I'm probably going to be reaching out to you later today to pick your brain on that.
Yeah, we used, we used the EJ CDC contract documents as the template for those. So you may be familiar with those already.
Right. And I provided them with the, with the language that the county likes to see in there. And we also need to, and it's in there, I'm fairly certain, didn't stick my eyes on it yet, but this whole project is funded through SRF, the SRF program. We are qualified for 0% financing for this, which is nice. Saves, saves a bunch of money also. So I'm not exactly sure, but I'm thinking, can we get a resolution to move forward with the concrete bidding, public bid? And then hopefully the timing works out so that we get those back, we find out what the numbers are there, and around the same time, we've got the EPC finalized, ready to go. And we've got a concrete contract and the EPC contract, and we can put a shovel in the ground sometime around April, May, I'm hoping.
All right. I can't see everybody on the screen, so you'll have to shout out or else I've got to get the screen back. Brian, you had a question?
A couple of them. First of all, on rehab of the digester facility, you said the new one was about $5 million. So we're rehabbing it. How many years do you expect the rehab to last? You know, as compared to a new facility? Because there's a price difference. So you went with rehabbing because it's more, I assume it's cheaper. So is the rehab nearly as long as it would have been if it was rebuilt? Or what are we talking there?
It is anticipated. From talking to our structural engineers, and just kind of general experience with the rehab, we're expecting to get 25 to 30 years. I mean, maybe you could say with the new build, maybe you're getting 35, but a lot of it's going to depend on some variables. You can see the range kind of going either way a little bit, but it's not much of an expected difference. And to be honest, either way, you'd be expecting after probably 20, 25 years, you're going to take it down and probably do some minor maintenance. We really haven't seen much difference when people have gone the rehab route from the new route. It just puts you on a different time scale for age. And with stuff like concrete digesters and that, it's not that they've just got a 40- or 50-year life total. It's just you need to do maintenance as you're going along. But they are pretty robust, and actually, a lot of the older structures are probably more robust and a little larger in, I think, width of the walls and amount of rebar than some of the newer ones are. So in general, if it doesn't get over half the cost of a rehab, it definitely makes sense to do the rehabilitation. Usually that's the threshold. If it starts to cost more than half of the price to replace it with new, you would much strongly consider going with a new replacement. But we're at closer to 25 to 30%, so.
Yeah, if we're going to get 20 to 25 years, I'm happy with the rehab.
Yeah, that's kind of my thought.
The mixing tank, you mentioned you're going to leave the old one as overflow. And so my question is, if we were to increase capacity there, would that old one come out and we add a new, more efficient one like the one you're adding? Is that the idea?
The thought on that would be, we'd have to debate, depending on the amount of capacity you'd have, where would a rehabilitation with a coating make more sense? Because the hard part is physically taking that out. You have a lot of cost to remove that, to protect all the structures around it because the mixer is close to that building and other things where it's probably a case where we'd look at doing some type of modification in that footprint, whether it was pouring up a smaller tank in there, some type of concrete lining. When you look at the cost of that, it is cheaper to build a new one. But now, after we build a new one, you pretty much run out of footprint, where then our next thing is to go back to that space and do the more expensive option, reusing that footprint. Obviously, you've got limited room there. We're using the piece of room you have, so it's economical. But once we chew through that, your next step you're probably forced to do is to do something with that footprint in that tank spot. I wouldn't think taking it out would make sense, but whether it be a smaller tank or just doing the more costly rehab protection of the wall.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Dana?
Good morning. I have a couple comments. When I look at the savings versus cost on a lot of these components, and I try to do the math, some of them, like the Cogen, take 75 years to pay back. It'll never live that long. So I think in the presentation, it would be helpful if you also had to note a life expectancy of each component. So then you could take $12,000 a year, 15 years, figure out what the total cost is. Because I get a little bit leery when someone says, "Okay, you're going to spend $1 million and save $12,000 a year." That's not savings. Not at all. You're not saving anything. You're spending a lot of money. It reduces your cost, I would say. I have a question about an energy performance contract. Is it true that the notion on this, if it does not meet the expectations, that you or somebody makes up the difference and pays the county?
That's correct.
Okay. I think we all remember what happened in Warren County with Siemens, where the data was analyzed by Siemens. The reports were very glowing. And then when a very smart person, Travis Whitehead, looked into it, the losses were staggering. Is there a third party that analyzes the data to see what the difference is? Or is it analyzed by your company?
It's analyzed by us and by Wendell moving forward. It's analyzed by us and by Wendell moving forward. Every, with part of the energy performance contract is what's called a measurement and verification clause. And that's an annual process that we go through every year to look at this. I can tell you that, yes, I'm very familiar with the Warren County. I'll, I'll use the word debacle, because that's what it ended up being. I can also tell you that I'm also very familiar with our first phase, which was an energy performance contract that worked out very well for us. And continues to work out very well for us. We chose to do the measurement and verification on the first phase for three years. The other thing is you can, at any point post-construction, you can decide not to do the energy or the M&amp;B process annually. Because there's a cost to do that annually. We did it three years, I believe, Joe. And, and the savings were there. We were happy with the equipment. We were happy with the way the project came out. We decided not to go through the M&amp;B process annually. I can see us doing this M&amp;B process on this next phase for at least three years again. And, and as long as we're comfortable with that, we'd opt, we'd opt out of that annual exercise.
But Joe, do you have anybody that will help you analyze the data? Because it's very complicated.
The other thing with the fact that Washington County did use the NYSERTA program, NYSERTA actually acts as a third-party review for both the Flex Tech program and any incentives that are obtained through NYSERTA. And then the second thing that we had in the, the first phase that likely we're gonna have again is National Grid and their consultants are providing incentives. So they're also analyzing and acting as a third party to verify the savings and to, they want to ensure they're not incentivizing something that, that doesn't work. So you've actually got several third-party entities that have a financial stake in this and are analyzing it and are giving money based on the performance. And they want to make sure that they're complying with their requirements. So there, there actually is several layers of third-party review in addition to county.
Well, I assume they also had that in Warren County, but somehow the data was so complicated that.
I don't believe they did have it in Warren County, actually, or whatever, with the, the Cogen. Because that wasn't an energy efficiency savings, where you had existing equipment and you were taking it out. It was a case where you were looking in to put new equipment, to get new things added on, to generate more revenue, to get more savings. So that was a much more convoluted approach than, than here you have existing equipment that you're under a legal order with your long-term control plan that you're committed to replace. And what it is, is the concept here is to look to get savings for that while you're completing your long-term control plan obligated improvements with the DEC and the EPA. So the case here is we're looking to offset. We're not looking to generate new revenue when they were doing in the Warren project. They had a much different thing. We're more of a fundamental, simple approach here of taking old inefficient equipment and replacing it. We're not looking to take new sources of revenue in to generate new power by taking those sources of load, where it's a, we're a much more fundamental project here.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Dan?
You're muted.
There, that better?
That's better.
Well, I had a couple of questions and they might have been covered in the past. But has there been an analysis on what the increased cost would be to the users for the additional cost of paying the debt back? And how, what's the impact to the users, I guess? It's gonna be zero.
We have a, we have a 0% financing.
Yes, I understand. That's just interest. You still gotta pay back.
We are, we are already generating enough revenue to cover the debt service on this through our ad loan.
Okay. And the next question is, and maybe I didn't hear, what's the life expectancy of it, of the plant with all the upgrades? Usable life?
The, the equipment that's being upgraded in this, I think you can effectively rely on a 25 to 30-year life. There is some systems that we aren't touching that you are gonna continue to upgrade. But between the, the phase one and the phase two improvements, I would suspect that for the next 15 to 20 years, your amount of money you're gonna need just put into the plan is gonna be significantly less. Like a car, you're still gonna have some maintenance, tires, wear parts are still gonna go. But when you look through the process sheet, you've probably upgraded 85 to 90% of the plant. You've got a couple of items left that you're gonna continue to track, but most of them are in that. I guess when you're doing your roof and you're counting on 20 to 30 years, you're in the 20 to 30-year range for the majority of the plant. Maybe at 5% to 10% of plant facilities, you've gotta be thinking of how to maintain them over the same period.
And the last, last question I have is, does this increase the intake flow? I know that we have, we're not at maximum now, but I didn't know if this is gonna increase it to where if we had a tremendous amount of growth, this expands the plant, or is this just going to try to keep it back to what it's originally designed for?
It's not gonna add capacity to the plant.
Okay.
It's gonna allow us to more efficiently pump the design capacities.
Right.
Get it into the, into the plant itself to reduce, hopefully, we can actually push a little bit more through the plant and reduce the overflow impacts to the river to a certain degree. That always, that's more weather dependent than the, than design. But um, the only two major components left in the plant that we haven't worked on after, once we get this project done, are the primary and secondary clarifiers, which is concrete, which is tankage. So those would be the only two major pieces that have not been rehabbed, once this is done.
And what percentage are we operating at right now for capacity at the plant?
Uh, our design flow is 1.7 and for 2020, I actually just got the numbers together. We average about 1.7 million gallons a day. So what's that? 80, 75, 80%?
Well, so for the future, then, do you feel that it's safe? Is this, if we're gonna do upgrades, do we need to increase it? I mean, I know like the Fort Edward site, we're working on developing the industrial park there. I, and I'm not disagreeing with anything anybody is saying, or I'm not, and I support this. I'm just wondering, I want to make sure we look at everything. It's, for what we want to see for growth, is it gonna increase capacity to where maybe this is the time we needed to redesign and upgrade this to a higher-capacity plant? Has that all been looked at and thought out? And if that's the case, then I'm happy with it.
I, I can't tell you it's been quote unquote, "looked at." It has been thought out, not with Wendell, but with me. There are other long-term control plan requirements besides what we're talking about here. And I think we gain capacity and meet those other long-term control plan requirements by doing work out in the collections. Separating the combined storm sewers, working to reduce sources of inflow and infiltration. That's coming, that's coming, Dan. Don't worry. You're gonna see another big project in another two years.
Thanks, Jay. That's all I have.
Daryl, do you have questions?
No, that was my question, Dan. Capacity, thanks, and growth for the future. So if we're, if we're leaning forward on that in terms of separating out stormwater and some other things, help us with that, that'd be great. Because 25 to 30 years, what's our growth rate? Have been in the past, we could probably run that trajectory and see where we tap out in terms of capacity. But if those other things come into play, may help us there. So to get the useful life before we have to commit more resources to an expansion. Thanks.
Anybody else have questions? I, I had one or two quick questions. The energy savings on the components you were changing out, that was over the life of the components?
The energy savings besides actually the annual savings, so that would be per year.
That was, that's a lot better number.
Definitely, yeah. No, it's per year, it's annual.
Okay, very good. I see that there's remote monitoring. Is, is Wendell gonna be any, doing any, or is it all Joe's people to be able to remote? I know you need to for these systems, so they don't get out of control. But is Wendell gonna have any watch over on the remote or anything, or?
The way it works is the SCADA and the logging part functions where it's got a, an ability for people to remotely log in. So what we did on the first phase is ourself, as well as we had some SCADA and some electronic experts work with us also, were able to log in and remotely look at stuff and investigate it with the district, both remotely and if we obviously went on-site. So it's an open infrastructure where anyone can, anyone who's granted permission can log in and monitor, but only the district's personnel can make changes. Because obviously, you don't want to allow that outside of the licensed operators. But it is nice, because it allows us remotely to do things that are going on and kind of overview, watch it and make suggestions. But we're not changing it, so someone who's not licensed isn't making licensed decisions.
Yeah, and the, the measures we're looking at is, we're going to expand the SCADA system to the new pieces of equipment, if that answers your question.
And the last thing I had is, are all these upgrades gonna make the affluent any cleaner and better coming out the other side for the rest of the system? Or is that to continue when Joe works on the next phase?
We, we have, we meet or exceed, usually exceed affluent limits. Our permit is up for renewal. There, the limits are not becoming tighter. There are some new things that will most likely be in the permit. Is it gonna make it cleaner? My gut says no. We're already pretty clean. We do a really good job of getting the BOD and the TSS out of that flow stream. So I'm, I'm comfortable with where we're at for affluent efficiencies. This is more operational efficient driven.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Al?
I, I would like to talk to Brian and Joe later this afternoon or when they get time. This is gonna sound familiar to Brian, because I think we danced this dance back in 2015. His sheet shows $107,000 in annual electric savings, and Joe's only spending 102. So I, I'm not comfortable with the electric savings numbers. And, and we had this conversation, I think, back in 2015 as well. So I would like to talk about, because the measurement might be kilowatt hours, not dollars. And that might explain some of the, some of the disconnect between me and the numbers, but I would like to work with you guys on that later.
Yep, definitely. I mean, some of it, I think, is with the turbine and the power generated. But I think there, it should be a case where we're not creating energy, so.
Any other questions?
I have, I have one more. Is it possible to get a resolution to move forward with the concrete portion of this bid?
So, Joe, I was just gonna ask all the smarter people around the room than me, if we can go for a resolution to take bids without them having a signed contract down the road. Is that kind of what you're asking us, Joe?
Yes, well, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what I need to do to make that happen, I guess, is what I'm saying.
If you're looking for the smartest person in the room, you're sitting next to her.
I believe the committee usually makes a motion to allow him to go out to bid. And then, once the bid's done, we would do a resolution.
Okay.
I'll move it.
All right. Brian moved it. All right, Daryl, second it. Is there any discussion on this? All right, all in favor of the motion Brian put forward, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. You got your resolution, Joe?
Thank you very much.
Could, could I, could I provide one piece of information for Al, just because I pulled up the sheet very quickly while, while that was going on? Al, the, the energy savings for this phase is actually only 24,000 per year. The 107 included the first phase, which had already happened. The 100, so 82,000 of that is not in this product. That's prior thing. So this one, we're projecting 24,000.
Yeah, but the, the energy cost in 2015 was only 104,000 and it's 102 now, so it's, the numbers just aren't there.
Okay.
Well, I can, I can tell you, we're not running the Cogen anymore. That's huge. When, when that Cogen runs, it provides us about 25% of our energy needs while it's running. So that's, that's a big part of that. Uh, delta.
Al?
The other question I had for Joe while we're here, are you at the point where you're willing to get this budget moved to finance too, Joe? So that we're not chasing our tail when you start shoveling the groundwork?
Well, I guess.
Are you thinking, Mark? Are you thinking, Mark?
I think, I think we come back to that next month, Al. Then we're gonna, we're gonna know where the, where the, we're gonna have a better idea about this concrete bid. We're gonna have a better grasp of what the EPC portion of this comes back to cost. I think that might make better sense. We're still narrowing that down. We have to go out and get those private bid numbers back under an EPC. So I think that's, let's do that in February, hopefully in February and not March.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion on, on this issue? Dana?
Wendell, have you done any EPCs before?
Yes, we've been doing them since 2001.
Have you ever paid anybody any money because the performance was less than anticipated?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, it's going.
Going once? All right, Joe, I guess we're ready to move on.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe, Brian, Adam.
Thank you.
Next up, I'd like to get approval for this intermunicipal agreement between Washington County Sewer District Number Two and the town of Kingsbury to basically take over the operations and maintenance of the sewers and pump stations within the town of Kingsbury, along, essentially along Dix Avenue. This does not include the town of Kingsbury Sewer District Number One, near Washington County Sewer District Number One. This is not the airport industrial park. This is down in the town along the Dix Avenue corridor. I supplied that agreement for review. And the commissioners are on board. And this clears up any liability and responsibility for the operation and maintenance of this out-of-district sewer system. And we've got a way to kind of, we're, we're tracking our costs for this and setting aside monies from existing revenue sources to offset smaller repairs and things that need to be done.
Dan? Joe, is this a renewal of an existing agreement, or is this all brand new?
Brand new.
And we're gonna take over the operation of it? Are we being compensated for that somehow?
Yes, through the, through the revenue streams that we're setting aside, yes, we are.
Okay, and who has reviewed this agreement?
Our legal, and I, I was under the impression that Roger had seen it. Or Roger.
Just saying that's the first I've heard of anything to do with this, and I, I'd like to get a little more details, because this seems like a little bit of an exposure, but. Roger's shaking his head no, Joe.
Okay.
No, I haven't seen it.
But this isn't the first time this has come up either.
No, it's not.
No, this is like the third or fourth time it's come up, but he's just getting down to the wire. But I think Roger does need to review it before we take it further.
And Roger should explain to us exactly what our responsibility. And Roger should explain to us exactly what our responsibilities are and what our revenues are to see what's what here.
The county's the county's responsibilities are nothing. It's the district's responsibility.
Until they go broke.
Dana?
Matt, are you finished?
Uh, probably I'm gonna you're I I you're the closer. I I I'm the starting pitcher. I just threw you give you the ball. You're gonna close this out, aren't you?
Basketball, basketball? Um, Joe, is this anticip- is this in anticipation for a large increase in the sewage that will come out of Dean Road if that subdivision goes in?
No. It's not in anticipation of a large amount of sewage. What it is in anticipation of is some sort of regulatory violation that the town and ultimately the sewer district are liable for moving forward. The town, the town has uh town sewer districts. Um, I I I think three, but it could be four. I can't remember. Um, and as a town sewer district, they are they fall under what is called a publicly owned sewer system. They do not have a treatment works. They discharge to a collection system that ultimately discharges to a treatment works. Well, they discharge to the Washington County Sewer District Number Two collection system with the treatment works under Washington County Sewer District Number Two's Speedy's permit. The town is also a POSS, which gives them a permit number. And they have to show that their system is operated and maintained. We have to show as the recipient as the recipient of the POSS that the system is properly operated and maintained.
Okay, Joe, is it is the correct term for all the pipelines? Is that the sewer edge? Not sewage, but the sewerage. So my question is, if this development comes in, that's a concern for the town of Kingsbury if they can handle that capacity, which ultimately flows to you?
And it's, yeah, it's ultimately our concern as well.
Well, you well, you get it in the end because it all flows downhill, but who is going to own that system? Still gonna be owned by the town of Kingsbury, but you take over the operation of it?
The town still owns the infrastructure. We are only operating and helping to maintain.
Okay.
Anybody? John?
Can you say the town owns the infrastructure? Yeah. That sewer district, Joe, would would the sewer district apply for grants for the infrastructure repairs and stuff with stormwater or would the towns, villages apply?
It it depends on if it's within the district, we would apply for those for the grants, which we are. Um, not related to this IMA. It's not well, sort of it. It's it's a very complicated situation, but um the the town would need to get grants for their infrastructure. They do not have combined sewers in the town. Um, they would theoretically potentially have uh other inflow uh in infiltration issues. Um, but that would be part of any if there ends up being a capital project, that would end up being on the town and then we would end up billing those uh uh impacted ratepayers for that project.
Brian?
So Joe, in the long term, I know you've been talking about this for a while and where we're going, but in the long term, are you expecting to add this to a district at a sewer district three? What what's the real goal in the end?
What I what I had really originally wanted to be able to do was to extend the boundaries of sewer district number two to include this area. It's just convoluted and and not a simple task. This this document, this agreement puts us all in compliance for now. And this RFQ that I just did to look at those drainage areas in northern Hudson Falls. It's partly related to being able to someday do an extension that includes the town of Kingsbury's sewer districts. But it's also to help us. We've got other issues downstream of there that we need to fix as well. So it's all part of my evil master plan. Um, it's just something that makes sense to look at. This covers us from a liability and a permitting, you know, in a in a regulatory standpoint. It covers the town from a regulatory standpoint. And we'll have a much better sense of what those sewers are and what's happening out there. You know, after a couple of years of being pooped on the ground and and being involved.
Okay, so one last question. Is the town of Kingsbury and your commissioners totally on board with this?
I I don't know that the town has voted on this. They have discussed it many, many, you know, quite a bit.
We did. We approved it the other night.
Did you? Okay, good.
Thank you, Dana.
And the commissioners have definitely approved it.
Okay. Brian, I'm kind of with you. I'd rather before we voted on it, have Roger look at it. Is this something that we can move to finance and make the decision there?
I'd be as far as I want Roger to look at it first, just to make sure we're in line, that's all.
But if the intermunicipal agreement, there's nobody involved.
Right. Right. It's just finally falling time for.
I know what it's.
Falling to find it. No, you're right.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I don't want to hold Joe up any longer, but I would rather have Roger. Here's Roger.
Yeah, there there should be some mon- some money to the district for doing the work. So this is just like we're we're gonna maintain their pipes and it's in our interest to do that because what comes from there goes into our system. So Kingsbury has an obligation to make sure where their stuff is going is good. And we have an obligation to make sure of what's coming to us is done the right way. So rather than have two sets of entities doing the same thing, it makes sense for us to to maintain at their expense, not our expense, because they're their pipes, maintain their system so that what we're receiving is uh meets with the requirements that for things that we receive and then process in our plant. So there should be, so if something goes wrong, somebody's gonna have to pay for it. They're not our pipes. We can do the work, but somebody's gonna have to pay. So there should be an inflow of money to the district to pay for our services of doing that, just to the district. Our outflow is our time and effort that we're spending. Um, the cost value of the personnel and things like that to do whatever work needs to be done.
Yep.
In essence. So we're basically ma- it's kind of like when we're maintaining the uh the the vehicles in DPW for the other, you know, for the villages. It's the same thing. We're just maintaining their system, but it's doubly important to us to maintain that system and make sure it's done correctly because once it leaves there, it comes to us. So if they have a giant leak in that pipe, it's in our interest to make sure or a giant infiltration. It's in our interest to make sure that's not happening. Because ultimately it becomes our problem and it's better to to fix it before it becomes our problem.
Who's our and who's we?
Uh, Wa- Washington County, the do- the sewer district, okay? So before it becomes the district's problem, it's better to catch it on the Kingsbury end and then they would pay for whatever the problem is out there. So a pipe collapses or something like that. As long as it's not due to our Washington County's negligence. In other words, if we forget to cha- if we forget to put an oil filter on one of the cars we're maintaining and so that's our fault. But if we're regularly maintaining the cars and it gets to a certain mileage and then it's time for it to go, then they have to replace it. So it's very analogous to that situation.
So we would be able to move it to finance and then give you a chance to look at it, right, Roger?
Yeah, sure. It shouldn't be. It shouldn't be that complicated, to be honest with you. I just haven't seen it.
That's not right. Trust me. We we tried to make it as simple and straightforward.
Is there a motion to move this issue to finance?
I'm moving to finance.
Okay, there's second? Okay, second by Darryl and Paul. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose. Okay.
Excellent, thank you. I do have one more quick little item. Um, I I am in the process of applying for a uh New York State DEC EFC uh engineering planning grant, EPG, for up to a hundred thousand dollars for INI. And that's tied directly to the RFQ uh sewerage area. Uh, originally, that's what I wanted to do for this. Um, but when COVID hit, I had to go to Plan B. Well, uh, three or four weeks ago, they announced that they're gonna open up the EPG outside of the normal CFA process. So I need to get an application in by February twelfth, I believe, is the is the deadline. Um, so I just wanted to throw that at everybody and let them know that I'm gonna apply for that uh EPG.
Do you need permission? Or do we have to pass a resolution to let them go on?
No, I don't. I don't think so. I just I just wanted to just need to make you guys.
I just want to make sure if you need a resolution, you had it, so it didn't fill you down.
Understood. No.
Normally they get normally they get permission to apply, Brian.
That's what I thought.
So Brian moved it. Is there a second? Is anybody seconding Brian's motion to give approval? Dan Shaw did. Kathy did. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Excellent. Ain't ain't names?
They've had it.
They've heard just about enough about poop today, Joe, I guess. Anything else, Joe?
No, but I've heard enough about it today too. So, all right. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Deb, are you on? There you are.
I am on. So, good morning. I think it's still morning. Yep. So, um, first I would like to take this opportunity to welcome Melissa Fitch as our new county administrator. Uh, she brings integrity and dedication to the post and we look forward to working with her. So welcome, Melissa. Um, a thing that we have on the docket first today is a Lake Champlain Basin Grant. Uh, we were awarded this grant for a hundred and three thousand dollars. It's going to fix a slide on County Route Seventeen in Fort Ann and to replace a culvert in Whitehall. So I would like a motion to accept this grant and one to send a budget amendment to finance.
And Brian made the motion. There's second. John Roselle seconded.
Yes.
And Kathy did. Okay. Any discussion on it? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay.
Uh, so next up, we have equipment purchases. So we put a bid out for a loader and can I share my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I do share screen. And I pick a screen because I have three. And y'all see it?
We have black. There you go.
You can? Okay. So these were the bids that came in. Um, and they have been vetted and it's looks like Capital Tractor is the lowest responsible bidder. So uh we were hoping we could award that to Capital Tractor for the purchase of the loader. There's funds in our budget for it.
I can't see the whole screen, but does anybody want to move? Move that?
I will.
Okay, Kathy does. There's second?
Can you see it now?
I said, but I got a question.
Okay, Brian, Brian and Paul seconded it. Brian has a question.
Yeah, on the warranty options, did we, are we looking at any of those that where we at?
At the moment, we are not.
At the moment, we're not. Okay.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor of accepting the bid, say aye?
Aye.
I got two ayes. Ain't names? Okay.
I have one more question. I have one more.
Oh, go ahead, Paul.
Um, will the loader be delivered ninety days from the day she orders it?
Um, that is a hundred and twenty, actually. Norchex had the ninety day one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So that is supposed to be from the day that we order it, yes.
Okay, I was, yep.
Or sooner, I hope.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep. And now I have to share another thing. So I think I need this. This. The loader. Okay, so next up is the foreman pickups. Hang on, I'm getting there. And that bid went out and the lowest bidder on that is Carmody Ford. Oh, wait, I gotta push this button. Sorry, I'm not like, I'm not IT. All right, can you see that?
Yes, we can.
So these are the bids that came in for the um foreman pickups. There's two of them. The low bid is thirty one thousand nine hundred and seventy one eighty nine for a total of sixty three nine forty three seventy eight. And um we do have that in our budget in carpool as well. But.
Is there a motion? Motion to accept the, Kathy, are you making the motion?
Yes.
The second, Brian seconded it. Paul seconded it. Any other? Any discussion on this bid? All in favor of accepting the Carmody bid, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Okay, I have a question.
Yep, Dan, okay.
Deb, does this include plows on those trucks?
Not on these particular trucks. And the reason for that is because this one is for Jimmy and it is and the other one is for Matt in the sign shop. So they don't have plows.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Dan?
So, sorry.
Um, it's probably been explained a couple of times, but I noticed there was only Fords. Is that because we only bid Ford? Is that part of the requirement of our bid?
In this particular case, from what I have been told, the reason that we particularly bid for the Fords was because they are the ones that have the extended cab. Generally, when we get four doors, um, we send it out to bid to any dealership. But because we wanted an extended cab, from my understanding, this is the only place we could get that.
Good.
So that's why we did it this way because when we get trucks for our other foremen, we've traditionally gotten four door trucks because we've carried passengers with us. If COVID stays around for too long, we probably won't do that anymore. We'll look into some other methods. So.
Okay. Did you have another item that?
Yep, I got a couple more. Let's see what I got here. Close. Okay, this is up already. So this one is the sheriff's vehicles. So we put out to bid for four new sheriff vehicles and um WebSmart Chevy was the one who got the lowest bid at forty three thousand oh ninety five and two cents for a total of a hundred and seventy two thousand three hundred and eighty oh eight. And um that is in the carpool budget as well.
Is there a motion to accept this bid?
I'm hitting motion.
Motion by Kathy, second by Paul. Any questions, discussion? Dana?
Uh, I think the sheriff vehicles now are all Fords, right? They're kind of like a Ford Explorer in a way. These are Tahos. I think a Tahoe is probably the most expensive car you can buy.
Brian?
I think it flipped this year, uh Dana. I think the Explorer ended up being a lot more, if I recall. Um, but Deb can probably speak to that.
Yes, so as you probably remember, it was either a year or two ago, we had to buy all new cages for the new Ford trucks that we got for the sheriff vehicles because they had changed the dimensions inside. And I believe that lends itself a little bit to. And I believe that lends itself a little bit to how much cheaper it is this time. Uh, cause we have to buy the whole package. We can't take out the roll bars and the other stuff that comes with it. I say roll bars. That's not exactly what I mean. Whatever they have in sheriff vehicles. So you can't escape. Cage, sorry. Um, so, but it is cheaper than the Fords buying the whole new package.
Okay, any other questions? Are we ready to vote on the motion? All in favor of accepting the bid, say aye.
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 Pose. Okay, very good.
I have one more, and that is the investigator vehicle. I think it's this. So this is a vehicle for the sheriffs as well, but it's, um, the unmarked investigator vehicle. And that was the little bid for that one is Joe Basil. Um, I think they've had bids that they've won for us before. So that was for thirty-seven, thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and nineteen cents for that particular one. And there is money in the carpool budget for that. And that was one of our planned purchases.
Is there a motion? Kathy moved it, second?
I'll second it.
Joe, Brian? Any other questions on this one? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Okay.
Great. So let's see what we have up next. I believe it's Church Street. Yes. So Church Street, we got the supplemental number two from DOT that authorized the construction phase. Um, it adds four million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand and four dollars to the project for construction and construction inspection. And we also, also got just today federal authorization to proceed with that. So I'm hoping we can move on with that.
Do you need a motion or anything from us, Deb, or are you just information?
Um, I, I believe I need a motion and I, I believe that is because, um, Sam has to sign the stuff.
Okay, Al, you got a comment? You're on, you're on mute, Al.
Sorry about that. Uh, yeah, there's, there's two resolutions, Mr. Chairman. There's one that goes through Mr. Wicks, and there's a budget amendment that goes through Mr. Campbell.
Really? Okay.
I got it for the coast project, but not for this one, so.
You, you sent me the right stuff, Deb. You're good.
You made the motion, Kathy?
Yes.
Did you make, make both of them, did you, or one at a time? Okay.
I can both. I can both.
I'll make the motion. I'll move them.
We're getting them all moved a second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay. Got that. I'll take care of that. We did both same time.
Alright, so now the, um, hopefully last thing that I have is I wanted to talk about the capital project. Um, specifically, um, partnering with Easton, Middle Falls, and Fort Ann Barnes separately but together. So I talked to the superintendents at both Barnes and I talked to the supervisors at both towns. And it appears that we're all interested in trying to figure this out, but we wanted to know where we go from here. So Matt has read through our, um, what was that study, our study? And he's more familiar with the process of doing this type of thing. So I wanted him to weigh in on it a little, and I wanted to get from you guys, you know, what you wanted us to do next, or what I had approval to do next. Questions?
Deb, were you proposing, uh, for a study to get some exact numbers so that the towns and the county would know what they're dealing with?
Right, I guess I explained this better this morning when I was talking to you. So we want to get some firmer numbers on how much it would actually cost to build what we would need. But we also want to have an agreement of some sort with the towns. So that, but I don't know which comes first, the chicken or the egg. Do you have the agreement to go forward? Or do you try to get some very more accurate numbers for what we want to do before we would go into that? I'm thinking that's where Matt comes in, right, Matt?
Sure. So I just drew together, and this is an overview of a path to get a building going. And it changes everything if it's just a county or their town. But, um, I could probably have a better draft of this to show everybody, but I'm gonna just hit some points of it quick. First, the consolidation study, and that was what we did, and it finished in two thousand and twenty. The study basically included the whole county, but we specialized it in the Fort Ann, Middle Falls, in this campus. So as of right now, Deb, you know, she's specified Fort Ann and Middle Falls as part of the capital project as the, her most need. So basically, the first thing would be the study, which we, we finished that con, that consolidation study. I reviewed it this morning. It's a good start. I believe it's what we need. Two, it was the conceptual agreements between the DPW superintendents, and she's completed that. Third would be the conceptual agreements between the county supervisors and the town supervisors. I guess at that point, you know, if it's Fort Ann and Easton that we're talking to, it's one thing if the DPW superintendents are good with it, but if supervisors aren't, they're gonna kind of need some sort of, you know, commitment to, to move forward. The next step up is what we're, we're hoping to move on our part, on Deb's part, is the projected cost of the architecture and engineering. So you would have firm numbers of just the engineering part of it to start, uh, negotiating with your town supervisors and everything. Obviously, nobody will jump into an agreement. So this is where, you know, you, you have some hard numbers, and you would review the final projected cost by the, you know, what the town would be in for, what the county would be in for. And, you know, at that point, you would have a chance to say, the town could say, we're not interested. The county could say, we're not interested. I don't know where that would go, but, uh.
Everybody's interested, Matt, just so you know.
Alright, well, when money becomes an issue, when they find out the project is twelve million dollars and it's nine on the town and three on the county, or vice versa, I'm not giving you those. Things fall apart quick or, or get a little tested. But you need those numbers to negotiate. We can't sit here. You know, we can do it conceptually forever.
Yep.
You want me to finish, Brian, or you want the question first?
Well, I just wanted to put out there that when we talked about this, uh, government ops, I think it was when we came out, uh, the big thing of the board was that they wanted the towns to pay their portion of the study. And there's probably somewhat of a study that has to be done to figure all those things out. So you kind of need the agreement between the towns and the county ironclad before you start so that everybody's all in on that part. And it's not just on county dollars. That was the discussion I heard, unless somebody else heard something different.
Correct, Brian. And that's where the, that's the, really the next step. And I'm gonna keep going down like the steps, and then I'll come back to that part of it, because that is the next step. You know, so the next step would be in the list would be to hire out the, to get a pro, or actually get a quote from the engineer, how much would it cost to design these projects? And in that step, that's where they're gonna collect all the needs in more detail than what the study, you know, showed us. The study showed us, it gave us a, you know, ten thousand foot view of it. Now, you're gonna get, start getting more details. We don't have an engineering cost or a project cost that's firm. This is where you would hire them to do that. And then you would start negotiating, you know, what percentages are what, and the architect would give that, you know, assessment too. You know, okay, here's your building, here's the square footage. But at, at that time, it's only the engineering. You wouldn't be hiring out the engineering for the building. That's, that would be the next step, you know? It would be the cost of the engineering for the project. I guess if, if there's a better way to say it, I don't know, but. And that, after each step, so they could say, Washington County, you know, town of Fort Ann, to engineer your buildings, it's gonna be three hundred thousand dollars. And then it would be on the supervisors, the town supervisors and the county supervisors to come up with a path of how you're paying each percentage that's above, you know, me or Deb. That would probably be the negotiation between the county board supervisors and the town. Whatever the steps the town needed and the county needed to be able to, you know, enter in that negotiation. Once that came back, then there'd be the agreement to either build the building or not build the building, you know? And at that time, I don't know what the town, you know, would need, you know, if they need to put it on a ballot or, or, or anything like that. That's where that would start happening. Once that's agreed upon, then we engineer the buildings. So, and, and in between all those steps, there's gonna be a bunch of stuff that pops up. It's probably not as complicated, you know, if it was just one entity. But when you're trying to do a consolidation of different ones, there's gonna be a lot of little steps. And it'd probably take a couple of years to make it happen when you're consolidating. So to go back now, what Deb and I are looking forward, are looking for is to be able to get the first quote on the engineering, to give uh, you guys something to talk about with your town boards, with the county board. Okay, the cost of the engineering for this project will be three hundred thousand. There's your starting point. Does the town and the county want to enter into spending this kind of money to engineer a building to be able to put it out to bid? Now you can shoot questions.
Kathy?
So if I understand it right, basically what we need is two resolutions from each one of the town boards and a resolution from us to proceed with an RFP to find an engineer?
We do have, uh, just.
Or can we use that engineering company that we already have in place?
We do have, yeah, that's right. We already did an RFP. We have, uh, engineering architecture firm under,
Right.
under contract to two thousand and twenty-three. And we wouldn't be hiring them. Right now would be a phone call, hey, here's what's going on. We're gonna need an estimated cost of what the engineering to get us to this point would be. And then we would report, report back with that number to the board. And that's where you would make your decision, you know, the town, the county.
Go ahead, Kathy.
So I guess I didn't answer my, ask my own question clear enough. I was trying to ask if that firm we already had in place would work. But in order to move forward, we need a resolution from basically our committee and the two town boards to say, yes, we're ready for that step, to have them go ahead and, and take that step, because really no money's involved until they tell us how much it's gonna cost, right?
That's right. So there, there would be no money in this step. It's just a procedural. So you were aware that we go, we are getting a price on it, and we would bring it back at that step. Then you could present it to the town and the county, you know, board. At that step, you would start spend, spending money. Right, this step, I wouldn't.
Right, there's no money involved.
There's no money involved. This is the procedure to make sure, you know, that the train doesn't leave the tracks. It's, it's going from month to month, the way it's supposed to.
Matt, would it be two separate, two separate engineering, I mean, cause you got two separate barns and two separate entities going on, and one may want to go forward and the other one may want to back out. So would we have two different quotes?
Yes, it would, it would be two different quotes. It would be one for each, uh, each, um, town that we, you know, identify, town, village, whatever. The, the value of doing multiple, it could be in the construction part of the engineering, you know, if we design one building and work at both places. But quite frankly, the, that's only a little part of it. You're gonna have site work, everything else. Each site is different. Um, each need is different in, in each place. So it would be two separate, uh, engineers. That way, if, you know, we can use, because right now Easton and Fort Ann are the two, if Easton decided, you know what? We're not in, I don't have my town support. Then it's just Fort Ann. If you try to do it all together, it kind of gets messy.
Matt, did you?
Geez, I, I have a whole series of questions, unfortunately. Have we as a county, or is this committee committed that we're going to replace the Middle Falls and the Fort Ann Barn? I thought at one point we were gonna tour those two barns to show us how good or bad, or the, you know, how soon we need to correct these things. We've never really followed through on that step. And if that train's left the station, then I missed it, but that's okay. If everybody's on board doing that, that's my first question. Second question is, Matt, um, did you see the consolidation study has been completed?
Yes, it has. It was completed in two thousand and twenty. It was part of.
For Middle Falls and Fort Ann?
Uh, yes, it's a whole three hundred page thing. I am gonna reduce it down to the Fort Ann and Middle Falls part, so it's easier for everybody to read.
Well, because i- in the capital plan that was handed out last week, for year twenty twenty-one, there's a seventy-five thousand dollar outlay for a consolidation study for Middle Falls and Fort Ann. So I can cross that off, that's all done?
No, that's what he's referring to.
Well, here we go.
It's done but not paid for?
No. He's referring to the study to follow up this study to get you to that point.
It is.
So there's a study that was done, then we need another study, and then we need the engineering. There's even studies in engineering?
You need a copy of the, of the study that came out? I mean, I think.
I thought we all got them.
We got a copy of that study. I didn't know if it was this study. The point is Brian saying that that study isn't the study.
Right, that one was the first part. The next one has to be done for the fine tuning, and then the last one would be for the actual building.
So for this one, that's for twenty twenty-one, for the seventy-five thousand dollars, is that a county cost? Or is that a shared cost? Is it, is it seventy-five?
That's what we're trying to find out.
I think Matt Jones has an answer on that.
I, I can tell you, Matt, that the wording of that in the capital plan is my fault. It probably shouldn't say a feasibility study, you know? It's, it, there's gonna take some more engineering to get to the part, we're gonna have to somehow get to the number. So to say it's a consolidation study, that's probably my fault to call it that. We've got the consolidation study done. But it is another step of engineering to get to the, how much is engineering gonna cost for this? How do we get to that price where you can start negotiating with the town? And to answer your first question about the building, the quality of the buildings, it, it's in the consolidation study. I'm gonna highlight some of it out. I'm gonna have, uh, have it reduced down, and you can take a look at it. You're more than welcome to go look at the buildings. I've looked at them multiple times. There, there's been multiple tours. The engineers have been in them. In, in each, in the feasibility study, it gives you, uh, actuals of the building, what the, you know, what kind of shape they're in and everything else. So you, you're welcome to read that and.
Well, I, I'm just saying that since, you know, Deb thinks it's a good idea, you're thinking it's a good idea that they've looked at it. Wouldn't it be in your best interest to get us to have buy-in on this and walk us through it and have us embrace this and say, yeah, let's take this and charge forward? Otherwise, we're sort of on the outside looking in and just, not that I don't trust you, it's just that, uh, it's nice to verify these things and know exactly what we're talking about before we start spending six figures and above.
A hundred percent, and that's why we're at this step here. And if, in, in between these steps, if you wanna go, you know, we can schedule that anytime. I, I welcome that. That's why we're not at any. We're not at any step to spend any money, but we are at the step where we need to have a better idea of what this will cost to even, you know, consider it. Am I wrong? I mean.
Is the seventy-five thousand dollars in the capital plan the total cost of that next study or our share of the total cost of the next study?
That's what we don't know. The net, the, I, I don't want the word study, because the next one's a little more than a study. The next one is drawing details from each town, saying, this is what we need. This is what, you know, we need eight bar, eight bays, we need three bays. This is what's gonna tell us the percentage, and it's gonna give you the, the, uh, you know, the numbers to work with to negotiate in budget for it. Right now.
Matt, I think, I think that what Matt's asking, is the seventy-five thousand gonna do it? Or is it seventy-five thousand from the county and seventy-five thousand from the two towns?
I'm hoping it's less than seventy-five thousand, really. I'm hoping, you know, when I, when I give them a call and we start the conversation with them, I'm hoping I come back, come back to you next month and say, hey, that's gonna be twenty thousand, or that's gonna be fifteen thousand.
Who's, who's twenty thousand?
Counties.
That'd be county.
Matt, or Matt, Al, did you have comment?
Matt, or Matt, Al, did you have comment?
So Matt, I don't know if it helps at all, but the, the way I would look at it is there is feasibility, planning and engineering. We're talking about the planning stage.
Sure.
Yes, that's well put.
Brian? Yeah, this is, this is basically a needs assessment, just as it was described.
Well, we're past the-
The twenty thousand is going to be the counties and there would be the same amount on the town, is that right? Because I know that's where the discussion went the last time was how much the towns were going to have involved in this.
I would, I would say this, when we get this uh number, whether it's twenty thousand, that's in my, you know, path here. That would be where you guys would go to the town and say, hey, if you're serious, we have a bill, you know, to do this, it would be fifty thousand, twenty thousand, whatever it is, seventy-five thousand.
Half of it's yours.
You would then negotiate with the town of how much of that was each, and you would know then if you're on the, you know, book to move forward. I, we're trying to get forward with multiple, and in each town might be different, what they have to do.
Dan, do you have a question?
Uh, uh, I do. Um, I kind of agree with Matt a little bit, even though I'm one of the recipients of this possible merger. Don't you, wouldn't the first step be the buy-in from the supervisors that were need to replace those two barns? And once you reach that conclusion, then it's whether or not the towns want to get involved in it, possibly save some money and the county saves some money by doing a um, an agreement like this. Now, because if you go this other route and let's say the town say, whoa, that's more money than we were planning on spending, is the county all done then? I mean, you don't have your barns replaced. The county barns are what's originated this whole discussion because they need replacing. Uh, I don't know about Fort Dan, I haven't talked to Sam about it. I mean, we would love to have a new barn. We got an old barn, but we aren't like up against the wall of having a, a new barn. But I think the county is getting to the point where they're going to be up against the wall having new highway barns. So somehow or other, I, like Matt said, we got to buy into it as a county board to replace these barns and then determine whether there is an advantage to uh go in with the towns. And my, I, I don't know if I'm looking at that the same as you, Matt, but I'm, I was trying to, I think what you were implying was something along those lines. You have to buy in, and then if there's an advantage to us, we buy in.
And now was it-
Didn't we get approval to do this, um, look into it? So you were interested in the beginning or, I mean, it is my fault that I didn't take you for a trip down there, but we can meet there before finance if you all want to, next finance meeting at Middle Falls and then Fort Dan at another date. But I thought that when I asked for permission to go forward with it, you were interested, the supervisors were interested, is what do you mean by I get buy-in from the supervisors? I'm lost.
What I meant was that, that we understand the need you have at those two facilities in this certain timeframe in order to, for you to get your job done. I, I mean, it's always in everybody's best interest if we're all on the same page or rolling the same direction going forward. So I'm just trying to understand, and now I understand for the first time, Brian, the difference between the feasibility study, the planning study, and then the engineering. So now that we're in the planning phase, can we break that down more in details about what we're really talking about?
Yeah, I think that's where Matt was going to ask the question of what that was going to cost so you'd know what was involved. Matt's at that point, they can, they can have it simultaneously because you're not spending any money. You're asking them, what's it going to cost for this study?
So he's going to come back with a quote?
That's what-
Not a study, not a planning study.
He's going to come back with a quote first.
Okay, that's-
And Matt's going to help everybody decide how far in they want to go.
Because if it's cost forty thousand dollars, it may be twenty on the county side, ten on the county side.
Right, and we're not voting on that yet.
Well, I know, but that could be the case.
Yes.
Which could then be the catalyst for those towns to say, I'm in, I'm out.
And it would be my suggestion to look at Putnam's barn and see what they have, which is a consolidated barn. So and Daryl, I remember invited us up there and said he'd be welcome to that or open to that, whatever. And so we, we should do that and we should see the barns that are most concerned, which happens to be Fort Dan and uh Middle Falls. I think we should see them and be getting the quotes. We can do that all at once.
I, I just don't understand what Matt and Deb are asking for, and it was the same thing, and what's being asked of us today. That's all I'm trying to figure out.
And I think he's just asking for a quote.
Dave?
So part of this needs analysis would be to figure out what percentage of the barn does the county need, what percentage barn does the town need? And then from there, we'd have a breakdown so we could look at the percentage allocated to construction costs, engineering construction costs, so the towns can make up their mind and want to spend-
No, we got to make this a shift when the town's in the planning phase, not the engineering phase.
For the construction.
No, you're in the engineering phase. I'm in the planning phase. If they don't fit in the planning phase, there ain't going to be no engineering phase.
I thought the planning stage would said, we'll go to the town, say, how many, how many bays you need, what type, what type area do you need? And then that would set up the breakdown of what percentage would be applied for the engineering and the construction of it.
So let's ask Matt Jones what he's asking for in this planning phase, all of the engineers. Thank you, Matt.
Hey, I agree with everything. I think everybody said here, I, I don't think anybody's off track here. I do have one historical question for people that have been here a little longer than me. When you did the Putnam barn, was the town the lead agency and the county just bought into the what bays it needed or was the county the lead agency building that and the, because it makes a difference, you know?
The county.
Right now, we're assuming the lead agency because we're in need.
It was the county through a grant, Matt.
Through the guy through a grant. So the county built it.
That's my memory, yes. It was a capital project.
Okay.
On this, um, Jay, was this a, a shared service? Did we go for a shared uh service grant for the feasibility and the planning stage? So part of the money that we're spending out, will we receive some of that back? Deb?
That's usually, that, that was the county administrators' ball there.
Yeah, but I, I also think though that the shared service is more about the actual building.
Yeah, I think-
I think that's about the actual building. I think this part here is on us. It, so that's why you have to know if you're going forward or not because the savings is just two hundred thousand dollars per municipality. So if it's a town, a village and a county, it's reduced by six hundred thousand. But if it's just two, it's four hundred thousand. But with that being said, it's according to what proportion of the building is yours. If, if it's a million dollar building and it's six hundred county and four hundred town, well, then it's four hundred and two hundred county and town. I mean, that's, that's kind of the way it's going to work. I mean, you gotta, you gotta do it fair across the board.
That's what I was wondering if, like what Matt was talking about, it felt like it was from point A, which would be the feasibility study to the uh planning, to the actual construction cost, a percentage of that, all of it, from A to Z, will go back to town expenditure and both towns and county. So the percentage of the total will go back. I think that's what I was trying to figure out where Matt was leading, is why are the first two stages totally county expenditure when it should all-
They're not.
Okay.
The first one was, we, we don't want, the first one, the first, the consolidation study, because we had to grant-
The feasibility study was all our, we-
The first one was the consolidation study.
Gotcha.
And that was all on us, but that was grant funded, if I remember right. The second one that we're talking about is going to decide what the percentage would be with each town, and that would, so then the total of that would be broken up accordingly to what that percentage is derived at. But they're going to give us a quote first so we have an idea of what's going to be split, but they will decide what that split is.
So what you're saying is if the quote is fifty thousand dollars, the towns would have to kind of buy in that they're going to get, have to pay a percentage of this planning study.
Yeah.
But they wouldn't know what their percentage is and what that number was until it was all done. So you're asking Easton to say, hey, it may be fifteen and it may be twenty-five.
Well, they'll know. They'll, yeah, they, they'll have some idea themselves whether they want half the barn, the full barn, so they can, they'll have some idea.
I've got hands up all over. I think Sam, you were the first one.
Oh, come on, anyway. Yes, I think what we need to do is decide, go see the barns and decide if the county wants it, because if the county doesn't want to partner, the town of Fort Dan is out. I mean, we, you know, we're not going to go alone because we couldn't afford to do it alone. So I think for us to go any further as a town, from our perspective, before we can buy, buy in or anything else, we need to know if the county's going to participate. I don't know if that's kind of what Dan was trying to say or-
Yeah, right.
I think that, I think we're in agreement on that, that, you know, once the county makes a decision, look at the barns, if you're going to move forward, that's fine. Uh, if you're not going to, then all this other discussion we're having is just, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not going to happen. So at least from the town of Fort Dan's perspective. So I, I think that we need to move and take a look at the buildings, the board get comfortable and say, yay or nay, you're going to progress it. And then I think we can, Matt, we can follow along with your plan. You know, all the questions that have been asked are viable, but I think we're back to the basic step. Yes, we had conversation on it. Uh, you know, we had talked about it, theory we kind of did, but I don't think everybody's comfortable with it. So I think we ought to set up the tours so that everybody's comfortable, either move on or say, hey, we'll make this go for another two, three, four years, whatever that case may be, and then the towns will flow according to that. So that's, that's just my, my thought on it, is one of the towns involved.
Matt?
I, I agree, and that's right back to the second, third step uh in this plan. I know I laid it all out, so we heard stuff at the other end, but we, we aren't even close to that. This will be a two, I can guarantee you in the construction world, this is a two-year process from the time we get a commitment and start moving forward. If everything goes right, you're, you're probably a year and a half, two, before you ever break ground or make the agreement to break ground. So this is just a start. I welcome the walkthrough of the barns. I mean, that's really, if I'm looking at my own plan, that's only where we're at. This, getting a price from a um can, can happen simultaneously because it's not going to cost us anything. It's just giving us an idea of what the engineering's going to cost to do this project. You know, and, and this is not going to happen until next month, you know? If we're going to have this, we might not even have this quote till next month. So that's where we're at. I'm not, we're not trying to jump steps. I know I laid them out and I said them and we're not looking at them, but we're way back in like the second or third step of this, of this.
Dan?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to add to what Sam said, I agree totally with Sam on this, is that when you start sharing costs, the towns and the county, for little towns like Easton, you know, twenty thousand dollars is a lot bigger number for us than twenty thousand dollars for the county. So when you start splitting things up, don't drive us little towns out of it saying it was going to cost too much for a study and the town board will say, you know, we aren't going to spend that money. So we got to be somehow realistic to keep the towns for a buy-in on this, because there's a difference between the county needing two new barns and the towns taking advantage of that by shared services, saving us some money in building a, a barn or adding to the barn that's already going to be built. So I'm not totally in agreement that it's divided evenly between the town and the county. Just FYI, I think that needs a little more dialogue on how you determine that.
Yeah.
Dana?
Um, Dan, there's no such thing as a free lunch here. If the barn is going to have five bays for the town, five bays for the county, you got to pay half. I think we're kind of getting stuck on, I think we're trying to herd all the cats at once, and like Matt Jones says, let's herd the group one cats first and then the group two cats after that. Number one, county supervisors tour the building. Number two, we offer to the towns, when we do an engineer study, do they want to pay for half of theirs if they're going to join? If they say no, then the county moves on and we stop talking to the towns. But at that point, we're sharing the cost for the design and plans. If the town balks, then that's our indication they have no buy-in and the county keeps moving on. I think, I don't think we should jump to the end right now. Let's do it in increments and then say, for example, if the town wants to buy in on the design plan and they pay half of that, and then later on, they don't want to commit to building the building, they can opt out then, but let's not ask the towns to opt in one hundred percent right now.
Okay, it sounds like one, do we want to set up a time with Deb to look at one or both barns?
Yes.
Okay, so we will try to get Deb to see what we can work out for that.
So do you want to set it up now or do you want to wait?
On the county calendar, the first week in February, I don't believe there is any county meeting scheduled here. It's completely open, is that right, Deb?
Correct.
Is that when?
So next week, there's nothing scheduled.
Oh.
Might be a snowstorm.
So, so yeah, if we're going to do this, if we, if, we got to do step one, we got to look at the barns. So Brian, do we, did you have-
Well, I, I have a suggestion that we, I would think Middle Falls, you probably got to do by itself, but I'm wondering if we couldn't do Fort Dan in the morning and go to Putnam in the afternoon and test them at the same time?
Well, all respect, due respect to Daryl, I, I don't really care about Putnam right now.
Well, I think, but first of all, if you've, if you've come to the conclusion after you've seen Middle Falls, that it needs to be, if you do that one first and then you do the other two together, then you get to see what it would look like as one that's already done with shared services. I'm trying to get us to see the whole picture, the whole picture.
The only people that need to see that is the Easton supervisor and the Fort Dan. I mean, if we're going to have to build a barn down the road, we're either going to have to build it by ourselves or we're going to build it with the others. So we need to know if we're going to build, build up one or two new barns. It's, that's step one.
I just thought it was a better way to see how it actually has worked. I, I thought that was a, I thought that was a key part of it.
And also, do we want Matt? I mean, he can go ahead and find out what a quote is on this.
It's not cost anything and it's just there. So Matt, I, do we need a motion for that?
I make that motion.
Is it a RFP? Is it a RFQ? What is it? Kathy made the motion, Brian started it. Dana?
I just wanted to- No.
Dan?
No, I'm all set.
I have one question.
Okay, go ahead, Dana.
In towns where there's a county barn, in any town, is the county barn larger than the town barn? I think the town barns are probably larger, are they not?
Yeah, not in my town. I'd say you're right, Dan, for the most part.
It's, it's a mixed state, I think.
All right, so it's not like the town is going to be one-fourth the size and we ask them to commit half the money. They're probably larger or the same in the, in, in Middle Falls and Fort Dan. Are they?
I think what I am going to do, Dana, or for everybody, is I'm going to take the three hundred page feasibility study that's right here, and it's the whole county. I'm going to take out Fort Dan and Middle Falls, make them individual, all the information in a few pages, and that's going to give you all that. It's going to tell you the percentages already, how many bays they're using, the square footage of their barns versus ours in each town, and it'll be much easier than looking through the whole thing. I can have that ready for you, you know, before we do a walkthrough and-
That, that would be helpful, Matt, because I think we need to analyze some stuff because we have questions that are probably in that study.
Yes, there, there's a lot of information in the study is pointed out, it's because it's so big, it's, it's a little tough, but I'll do it.
We have a motion on the floor. Al, you want to comment before we vote?
I just wanted to answer Dana's question, the uh Fort Dan barn, the county has three bays and the town has eight. The Easton barn, the county has three bays and the town has eight.
Dan, that blows your idea out of the water.
Dan, that blows your idea out of the water, thank you.
Actually, it doesn't, from what I said.
We, we have a mo-, we have a motion on the floor to just have Matt to check out quotes on what the engineering costs would be. Go ahead there, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, okay. Back to looking at the barns. Did you get a date set, Deb, while we were all arguing around on the other issue?
Um, there's nothing the first week in February so that we can, I thought that was when finance and personnel is, but that's not.
Second week.
Second Thursday.
So, um, we can meet down there, um, before a meeting, if that's easiest for everybody?
How many bays do we have in the highway barn?
Or we can
Dan, you're not muted.
The answer's eight.
Okay, go ahead, that is the right question.
Or my sister's in real estate and she can do a video for you, or both. She would love to video a barn like that. So do you wanna go down there next week or do you wanna go before personnel on the, whatever day that is? We could do one barn before personnel and we could do one before finance.
No, we have, next week's open, there's nothing on the agenda. We can pick a day next week when nobody has any meetings going on, Deb.
All right, so let's go Tuesday at ten o'clock to Middle Falls.
Is that the second?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh, everybody's frozen, okay.
Although to be meeting.
That's what I wanna know, does it have to be meeting?
There'll be notice meetings, yeah.
Oh, there'll be meetings, so you have to give a week and all that stuff?
In all honesty, do we have to have a meeting to do this? Because I've spent my fair share of time on building, swinging a hammer, doing roofs and putting up walls. And I'm pretty sure that the information in the study is gonna be more than anything we're gonna see. Middle Falls isn't that far away, but I really don't see the need for us as non-experts in this to call it a formal meeting to drive to Fortin or for Fortin to drive down to Middle Falls. Couldn't it just be more, if you're curious and need to lay your eyes on it, you can go and look at yourself instead of a formal meeting?
When seven of us go seven different times, when Matt and, Deb gotta go seven different times? So, so Deb, I think when we lost you and you came back again, did you say that your sister is an expert at videotaping this for real estate sales? Is that something that would work for the committees if you had a video of all the issues and what is going on in them? Did I hear you say that, Deb, or did I lose you?
Yes, no, you, that's, that would, I would do that and then anybody who can't go or doesn't feel comfortable going, I could, um, send that out. I'm volunteering her without her knowledge, but I'm sure she'll, I'm bigger than her, so I can get her to do it.
You gotta be tiny.
I think we have a harassment policy.
Unfortunately, violent.
They're both not
I have a question for Debbie.
What's that?
Go ahead, Paul.
I worked, I worked out of, uh, Middle Falls before, four years ago. Is it in better shape now than it was four years ago or is it worse?
It's, I wasn't here four years ago, but it's definitely not in better shape. Um, you know, we do whatever we can.
The trailer?
Yes, the trailer is in horrible shape. Um, yeah.
It was in horrible shape four years ago.
Yeah, yep.
Anyway, we could recess this meeting and meet there on the second, if that's what we wanna do too, that's the other alternative.
What, what's pleasure of the committee?
I don't wanna drive to Fortin.
I'd be better off setting meetings, whatever Deb says we can do.
I mean, you're, today's, today's Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're a week, we can
So we got time either way.
Right. It's just if you're meeting as a group to discuss
So there's a quorum problem, so we have to notice it as a meeting. Quorum could be as skewed as war. A quorum could be as skewed as war. Right.
Who is, who is interested in, doesn't have to be just the committee, because it involves all supervisors' decisions. Who has interest in meeting down there Tuesday at ten o'clock in Middle Falls?
Can I wear my bike clothes?
Three, four, five, six, seven, we have at least seven people that would like to meet down there.
We're getting a day and a half out of the house, it's worth it just for that.
He better bring the dog.
My number one constituent.
All right, let's do that then, we'll meet down there Tuesday at ten o'clock in Middle Falls. And, you know, the ones that, that can't get there, the rest of us will try to tell you what we saw from what we understand.
Okay.
Because at some point here, we've gotta decide whether we're gonna be spending a lot of money or not spending a lot of money, one way or the other, so.
Right.
So just Middle Falls?
Just Middle Falls.
Just Middle Falls.
On that day?
On that day.
We can go to Fortin afterwards?
Well, we can afterwards, but
You like it out of the way, you don't wanna get a whole separate meeting another time, do we?
That's true. We just recess till we drive up there?
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay.
Who are the two barns?
Who are the two barns, right? Supervisors can get the, one or both of it. If they can't make one, maybe they can make the other.
Is the brewery open for lunch?
You gotta ask Sam, he's not sitting there.
He's not sitting there.
If Fortin does not buy lunch, we know they do not have buy-in.
You gotta say it when he's there though, Dana.
I make that motion.
Well, that's what happens when you leave the room, you get nominated for the task.
That's right.
All right, is there any more discussion on this at the moment? And Matt, thank you very much for, for your efforts and, and we'll see what we get for a quote. Anything else, Deb?
No, nope.
Uh, Jay, one quick question, um, do you wanna continue on? Do you wanna make sure somebody's available to show you around the barn, uh, in Putnam on the second as well, just in case? Makes no big deal, we just have Gary or even the county guys. Make sure they're in the barn.
I thought, Daryl, is it, if this does move ahead and there's several more steps to go, then I'd like to get and meet at the Putnam barn with the agreement and the whole paperwork on how this whole thing's set up. But there's no sense doing that if this thing dies at step one, that's my thought.
Okay, sounds good.
You only wanna see, um, you only wanna see the Middle Falls barn? Do you, did you, you don't need to see the Eastern barn?
We're saying Fortin in the afternoon, no, right afterwards.
They decided that we're going from Middle Falls up to Fortin.
Okay, but you don't need to see the town barns, you just need to see the county barns.
Right, cause that's what, that's what the county's gonna be spending money on one way or the other. And now that Sam's back, he didn't know that he offered to buy lunch at the brewery for everybody when they got up there, so. All right then, Dan?
Yes, I hate even bringing this up, but, uh, is the Kingsbury Highway Barn the most modern barn built so far?
No.
Well, I was, I was thinking I would have you guys probably stopping Ford Edward on the way up to Fortin because
Oh, right, Ford Edward's a new barn. We ought to look at a couple new barns too, so we know what we're getting into.
Kingsbury has a little, little bit better layout for what we are thinking, but because of the terrain, Fortin or Ford Edward couldn't have drive-through, so it'll, it'll show you two different barns. Boy, you guys are gonna have a fun field trip day that day.
Kathy?
I'm sorry, if I'm just a really negative person today, but in all reality, I would not go to my barn and tell my highway superintendent how to set up his barn. Do you guys know where the equipment should be? Do you guys know how the truck bays should work? That's really on your highway superintendents, it really isn't up to us what a barn looks like. We're not the one working in it every day, just because we think a layout looks nice, they know what kind of equipment they need, they know what kind of access we need. So it seems funny that we're really swimming in the weeds here if we're gonna start micromanaging how they lay out a barn and looking at it. If you want the highway superintendent to go look at one and give us recommendations, that's one thing, but as supervisors? I think we're really swimming in the weeds on that question or that idea, but that's just me, I'm a negative Nancy today.
Matt?
Listen, Kathy, all I'm saying is this says we're gonna spend seventy-five, then a hundred and twenty-five, and then two million. Before I wanna go down this path one step, I wanna be informed, that's all I'm saying. Because it doesn't take long before that slope gets slippery and we're headed to that two million dollar number. But I gotta know right now, you, you gotta ask me to buy in on this whole thing, I'm not trying to micromanage anything, I just wanna be informed.
I'm good with reading Matt's reports, cause the experts looked at that, I don't need to look at it, so.
The experts are sending two million dollars, we are.
I know, but that's just me, the experts already looked at it, I don't have to field trip it in the middle of the winter to say, yep, that's a water stain or yep, that's a hole in the side of the wall, but that's just me. You guys can travel, have lunch, Sam's buying.
Did the cows run away this morning?
No, they didn't, I just really feel like this was all talked about a long time ago. The study was done overall for the county to see how the, whether the county could consolidate barns. At the time, we had the discussion that said, why don't we include the towns, cause that might be smart now? Why don't we move ahead? We've taken all those steps and now, again, everybody has half a memory of forgottenness and I just feel like we've been swimming in the weeds all morning and it just gets frustrating sometimes. I know maybe, maybe my youth has a better memory and that's probably a harassment thing, so I'm on a roll this morning. Bye.
You're bringing me down, man.
Sorry, I don't really think I'm much younger than most of you.
I think, I think Kathy, you're just trying to make this stretch out so that I can have a longer DPW meeting than you used to have.
I, I
You're not gonna tie Ellen Brown.
This might, this might be where my frustration is coming, I've heard a lot of this already before, a couple of times. Y'all have a good day, I see you at public safety.
Deb, you got one more?
I have one more thing. Um, remember when we bought a new lift for the carpool? They put it in, they love it, and now we want to auction off the old lift, so, old lift. So could we get permission to, um, declare surplus, the lift and a non-functional battery jump box?
I'll move that.
Brian moved it, is there a second? Daryl seconded it, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, okay. Any, any others?
Nope.
You're all good, Deb?
See you all on Wednesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
That's what you think, she's not going till Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you all very much, unless somebody has something else, we'll adjourn.
Not gonna be late, huh?
I don't even have a leave button on here.